You can tell I'm asleep. I was thinking that.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call Tuesday, August 26, 2025 Committee of the Whole to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes ma'am. Alderman Cox, here.
Alderman Gregory, here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderman Purchase.
Here.
Alderman Nitrano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I would accept the motion for approval of August 12, 2025 Committee Meeting Minutes.
Go move, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Corporation Counsel, I'm aware there's a need for executive session.
Yes, we're gonna need to go into executive session under exemption 2C5, the acquisition of property.
So much.
Second.
Welcome back everyone. We're on the news with the nights are hot and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
You heard your folk, he is scrunched up so much.
What did he say? He was like this.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
Oh, I was good to him. Oh, no, they were saying what they feel with this shoe. You can't take it.
Motion to reconvene?
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's wake up. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Are there any presentations?
No.
No presentations. Next, we have ordinances table or remaining in committee. Mister Clerk, could you please read those ordinances? Oh, I'm sorry.
Ready? Orders is table to remain committee, twenty twenty-five, two forty-seven, and twenty twenty-five, two eighty-one.
Is there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances for consideration? There is none. Moving on.
Ordnances for committee considerations, twenty twenty-five, three thirty-eight is an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of a contract UE twenty-six dash zero four dash fifteen. Railway lighting with Graybar Electric Company, Inc., with Wesco Anexter, Inc., for a total amount not to exceed one million seventy-six thousand twenty-three dollars and twenty cents for electric transmission distribution and operations department for the electric transmission distribution and operations department for the Office of Public Utilities.
For consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of twelve refurbished voltage regulators from Sunbelt Solomon LLC in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand four dollars and fifty cents for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with Optical Control LLC in the amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars for the tuning services for the Dahman Unit Four for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-one, an ordinance authorizing the approving agreement with the implementation of AAR package and the term conversion for the SCADA EMS system for the Open Systems International, Inc., DBA, Asflin Tech Digital Grid Management in the amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Public Works, twenty twenty-five, three forty-two, an ordinance approving a plat for a large-scale development of Cedarhurst in the Springfield Independent Living Cottages of the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-three, an ordinance amending chapter five, uh, title five, chapter fifty-one, article four, section fifty-one point three-one of the nineteen eighty-eight City Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the residential building plumbing modification reimbursement program.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty twenty-five, three forty-four, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by J and J Operations LLC DBA Causes Pizza and Pub located at forty-four forty-one Ash Grove Drive.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-five, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by Kyle Restaurants LLC DBA Luketons on Fourth located at five seventeen South Fourth Street.
Much for consent. Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-six, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to the Richland Community College DBA Making County Law Enforcement Training Center in FY twenty twenty-six for the Springfield Police Department.
For consent.
Second.
There is no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-seven, an ordinance amending ordinance zero six five dash oh two dash twenty-five and authorize an additional payment of sixty thousand dollars for the total amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the MGT Impact Solutions LLC retained Dallas Whitford to provide financial assistance services for the Office of Budget Management and Planning and Economic Development through February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-six.
For consent.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing three-year contract for RFP CS twenty-six dash fourteen for linen and uniform rental for all city departments with Vestas Services LLC for the October one through twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight in the amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Office of Budget Management.
And there is no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three forty-nine, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFP CS twenty-six dash sixteen and execution of an agreement with Hustle and Heart Sports Performance LLC for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of four parcels in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, I would have asked y'all to pray.
Twenty twenty-five, three fifty, an ordinance authorizing professional services agreement with Two Versus, Inc., to assist in the request proposals and selection of Pharmacy Benefit Manager PBM effective March one to twenty twenty-six through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the Office of Human Resources.
Motion for debate?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred dollars for to Keith Air, a former Springfield firefighter in settlement of workers' compensation claim in case number sixteen dash WC dash zero three one seven nine one.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-six cents to Andrew Watts, a former Springfield police officer for settlement of workers' compensation claim in case number twenty-four dash WC dash zero two one 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 nine.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ten cents to Isaiah Cooper, a Springfield Police Department employee for settlement of workers' compensation claim and for case number twenty-four WC dash zero one seven five four nine.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-five, three fifty-four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Springfield Park District and the City of Springfield for acquisition and subsequent transfer of the Robin Roberts Stadium.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? I know we ain't got no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Of course, there is. Um, I would like to thank our zoning manager and director Fuchs, um, for the hard work that the Public Works Department did in Enos Park with SIU School of Medicine. We had about a hundred students come out to be split up between Enos Park and the Pillsbury area, and we had amazing time, and Brady did an awesome job of making sure that we got everything to one area and helped us on his time off. So, thank you for that. And I just wanted to recognize a young lady in the audience, I think Hylea. She is our new fire, uh, our new assistant fire chief, Julie Plunk. Thank you for being here. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd also, Director Fuchs has something for your, your staff. Um, it's not very specific, but, um, I was told, uh, constituents, uh, mentioned that they'd seen an accident in Springfield. It looked kind of, it looked kind of ugly, and there was a city truck, Public Works truck that was nearby, and they pulled over and parked behind the accident just to, with their lights blinking, to provide awareness and, and help direct, move traffic around at, at a busy time, and just wanted to say thank you to whoever it was who did that, Director Fuchs. Um, just, they didn't have to, but they, they, they helped kind of just keep things safe and quiet until our police department or fire department could get there. So, uh, just want to send out some thanks to them.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley, and now, uh, Alderman Carlson.
I just, I want to give a shout out to a couple of folks in my ward. Um, you know, we, we've talked about the grass cutting and speeding the process up. I'm glad we passed it last week, but up until then, we did have a couple of neighbors that had a problem house in West Chester. Um, because of the bureaucracy, the grass was two and three fi, two and three feet long, but we did have a couple of neighbors who, or one neighbor, who decided to take it upon himself and mow it. So, I want to thank him for doing that. And then, uh, we had a, we had a fire on Greenside Drive the other night. There were six fire trucks who showed up. I want to thank the neighbor who saw the car in the garage on fire. Uh, something happened with the, with the resident of the house. He pulled the resident out of the car. He was having problems starting it. Uh, two minutes later, the whole thing blew up and went on fire. So, I want to acknowledge the neighbor who, who did a, you know, Good Samaritan. This was like seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night, just happened to be at the right place at the right time to help out his neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carlson. There is no other further discussion. Mister Clerk?
People to request to address the city council, James Johnson.
Come on up, James. Now, you know you live from the five with five minutes.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
So, you know it's important when I write it down.
Okay.
Come here on a committee's meeting. So, it's something serious. But since y'all in the mood of thanking people, I'mma, I'mma start off with thanking all the men and women in the unions who are working on our streets and dealing with the public who don't want to get off their phones in the construction zone and the one, don't want to slow down. So, I'mma thank all those people who keep our streets or creating new streets for us. Now, that's that.
Thank you.
Now, another thing I got an issue with is the police and fire want to thank each other for doing their jobs. I don't really get that, and I don't know why that's important, but if y'all want to thank the police and do news press conferences for what they supposed to be doing, then okay, I guess that's where we are now, but it don't make no sense. If that's your job, just do your job, and we can move on. We don't need no special meetings and press conferences for all that, but I ain't come here for all that. I came in here for this. Now, if you a believer, you ain't got to worry about what I'm about to say. And if you a non-believer, if you a Peter, then you gonna be in trouble. You probably need to pay attention, because I'mma speak to all the poor people in the community, to our black caucus. Y'all can include yourself, but you're not written down, to the black and brown, to the homeless people, for all you ones who don't vote or didn't vote, and for all you non-working people, you gonna start suffering. And before I go into it, I'mma give you, uh, two decades ago, that's twenty years ago for you slow ones, there was a storm called Katrina in August twenty years ago, in the ninth ward. There's a documentary out there. You need to watch it. You need to see what we're going to see here real soon. Back twenty years ago, they sent the military into New Orleans, and those people got displaced. And all you hear about right now today is some man want to send the military into certain states where he's eroding history, and he's doing some unprecedented things, but let me stay on my notes, because what's happening in our country right now is unprecedented. It's not cool. We being led by a dictator. And to our governor, who fights for the unions in this state, and the only one that I done heard speak up and tell this man, we don't need him here. I want to thank you, Governor Prister. Keep doing what you doing. We gonna back you, and, 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 and we gonna do what we have to do to keep our state safe and our people safe. Now, for our people in, that I just mentioned, there's a radio, Roland Martin is somebody we all need to be listening to, because he's kicking facts about what's happening and what's going on. Of course, we don't have black radio stations, and we don't get the media and attention. We don't hear it because of the way things are set up around here. And so, I'mma leave you with this, because my time is running out. A black man can shoot a white cop that lives and can't get a free trial here, but a white cop can kill a black woman, and you say he can't get a fair trial here. Come on, stop it. TV twenty wants to talk about this case every day, but they don't say nothing about that. This man ain't going to get no free trial here, uh, fair trial here either. Now, in my last twenty seconds, and I don't care who you support and who you stand for, but for all you mega people, America is going to be great when God walk this earth again.
Thank you.
Ken Pachia.
Be nice, Ken.
I'm always nice. So another day, another week, and another good, good reason why we should really take to heart my suggestion of a real hard, long-drawn-out process of talking about a landlord registry and what it could mean for this town. I assume everybody here has seen the Illinois Times article, right? If you haven't, I encourage you to go check it out. The Wyndham's probably going to be tied up in court for quite a while. I wouldn't expect to see any changes over there anytime soon, and why would that be? Is it because we sold to an out-of-state landlord who has no good business running a building, he didn't have the funding to renovate it in the first place, and trying to rely on millions of dollars of city incentives that weren't there? Does that seem weird to any of you? Does that seem like a solid business plan for renovating a massive hotel that's decades behind updates? But yet we sold it to him, and now it's just going to sit dead in the middle of our downtown like an anchor? What's the solution for that? That's way out of your guys' hands, these are FBI-level investigations. How long you think it'll take? How long's Old Town taken? I bet it eclipses it, and that's the kind of behavior we're going to keep running into if we don't take serious the kind of people that take possession of the buildings in our city. I know there's a lot of opposition from realtors and residential owners that run landlord-level sort of apartments and complexes, but I don't frankly care. If we actually look at the problems that are endemic to the buildings that are not getting inspected, that are being overlooked or handed off to landlords that don't even have the money to do what needs to be done, if you don't have the money to renovate a building, then why are you owning it? What do you think someone's just going to bail you out? What kind of place do you think you live in? That's not a business plan, right Ralph? I mean, come on, that's ridiculous, right? And that's the kind of thing that we handed off, the biggest building in our city that people will see from miles away, and what do we have to tell them? It's going to be nice and dark for a long time to come, and that's embarrassing. I bet it embarrasses you guys, trying to explain that situation when out of town is embarrassing. How did it get that bad? How did it reach that level of mismanagement that we have an out-of-town owner who sabotaged his own building to the tune of twelve million dollars that he's not ever going to pay off because he didn't even have the money to renovate the mu, place in the first place? We should have never sold that building to him, we should have never allowed those incentives to be promised by a previous administration. That's the kind of thing, though, that we see as a desperate plea to help prop up downtown. Like I saw your name in there, Mor Doc, for the parking level agreement, they just stopped paying, didn't they? And they were like, well, we don't charge anybody, we need to keep paying you guys. What kind of business runs that way? We're just going to stop paying you? I mean, that's insane, but that's the kind of landlord we let take over a ci, a landmark in our city that will now stand as a testament to the failures of management within it. And we could have prevented that by being more adamant about who takes possession of our landmarks, our buildings, the things that matter to our city, instead of brushing it off because it's going to be a hard fight. It will be a hard fight, that landlord registry will not come easy. I promise you, you will upset people you know, you care about, that you are friends with. But when you talk about the well-being of this city for decades to come, I'd ask you to consider what kind of friend would ask you to back off something like that? Just like I said last week, if there's rules, we should all follow them. Now, you've seen me come up here, I may have taken a few extra minutes or a little bit of time if you let me, but if you want me to follow the rules, we'll end up following them. They have to be, because that's what they're there for, and if not, there's punishments. But the punishments we're going to have is a dead building in our city, burnt-down blocks that could have been prevented by real inspections on this building that was decades behind code. You know where my radio station's going? I won't tell until I launch it, but I can tell you where it was going to go. It was going to go in that Adams Street building that burnt to the ground. And quite frankly, I got to see the inside of that building, and it was a travesty, and that wasn't the gentleman who owned its fault. They took over what had been a building that had been degraded for decades, holes that ran through multiple floors from water damage, long-term neglect, and a failure to update it. Would yearly inspections have fixed that? Would inspections and required coding updates have prevented that electrical wiring from not only burning down that building, but destroying one of our landmark restaurants? Moxo ain't coming back, they make way more money on the west side, they give us a little satellite hub down there. But that's the kind of cost we're going to have to the downtown we're trying to save, and it happens all around the city. There are buildings all over that are just as neglected, just as overlooked, run by people who have no business owning them, who don't have the money to update them or take care of them. And quite simply, as a city, it's really, really worth thinking about that. When you leave tonight, look at that building, remember what it was.
And think about how long it's going to be till it ever will be again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Aaron Cahill.
Alderman Williams.
Ken, I got a question, if you would please. I'm confused, and this is before my time.
You're just fine.
So you have information saying that the city sold?
So the city didn't sell it, but in terms of those negotiations, we were a part of that. Like the Wyndham didn't just transfer hands without anybody having any part of that. That, that is a huge part of our city, and part of the sale was the incentives that Langfelder told the guy would be involved in that. Now, that's another administration, and I'm not going to speak for Jim, but that's in the newspaper stories about it, that that guy said flat out that he was promised those incentives, and Misty's quoted it as when she came in, those incentives were not available anymore, and that's a legitimate thing to do, because those incentives shouldn't have been promised anyways. That kind of development should be something that there are groups out there, and it may take longer, but quite frankly, you shouldn't be handing it off to the first person that's willing to take it and then have to incentivize them to do it. There's basic incentives, like when we brought Walmart and gave them a tax break. I mean, that's the kind of thing you do to bring businesses in, but to the point that you're talking tens of millions of dollars as part of that ownership group coming in and taking that ownership, that was part of their agreement.
Okay.
And I don't know that that was like a formal contract or anything, Roy, but that's been cited in, in like public information and stuff.
I appreciate it.
Of course.
I just didn't realize it, I do.
Well, I looked into it a little bit.
I, I want you to know that building is special to me, i- it's my very first job.
I worked there too, Roy. I was a banquet chef.
I was seventeen years old, I worked at a Bunky's Coffee House on the first level, and it, and it was going on, I mean, it was when it was the farm thirty, I mean, it was just a beautiful place to work.
We had the Manhattan Grill Room.
I just want you to know, I just want you to know that I care, and I believe there's others up here do, that do care, even though it is appearance like we don't, because, because the public can't see anything, so, you know.
Well, to be fair, though, I just, if I may real quickly say, I don't think any of you, whether we agree on stuff or not, don't care about that. I think it frustrates every one of you to drive down anywhere in this city and to see a giant black tower in the middle of it. That is an eyesore, and it's a public health danger. If somebody gets in there, how are we going to find them? If a fire starts in there, what would we do? You know what I mean? Like, there's a lot of, lot of issues that arise from that, and then with the court cases, and now an insurance fraud claim, I mean, that's going to be a nightmare.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. That was, I, I believe that was a private sale, Ken, we, we had nothing to do on the sell to Rajabi. We, we had nothing to do with it. Now, when Mayor Langfelder, he, he offered some incentives, and I think at the time the council didn't feel that those incentives were, were, were proper, not whatever, we didn't.
We had an hour debate.
Yeah, we had, we, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, two hours.
Anyway, so, but that was a private sale, we've never had any, now, the states way back, they, they offered, I guess, loans and stuff like that, city hasn't had anything to do, that's a, that's a private-to-private sale, and we don't have anything, as far as I know, we don't have anything to do with, with anything like that.
And I want to say, what, hold on, Ken, I want to add on to what Alderman Hanauer said too, and as my colleagues just corrected me, so it was more than an hour debate, and that was the first time somebody had asked me to put my head on straight too, or told me how to think, and I, I challenged him because we asked for financial statements so that we can see that you could see your project through and know that you could execute it, and we determined that it wasn't there at the moment, and was wanting him to come back, but that, seeing that article today made me realize too, I'm glad that I stuck to my ground, and I got my head taken off in the community for, right after, but now, look at the evidence that has came out against somebody who did something malicious. We cannot talk about it because it's under investigation, so I'm only stating what we all read in the paper today, but this just helps people to be educated about things when things come forward, read up on it, ask questions, call your older persons, and, and get filled in.
But do, but can we agree on the statement, though, that if we had better oversight and control over who we allow the buildings to be taken control of, because that's part of what those registries can't offer, is that out-of-town ownership is highly supervised and even restricted from certain ownership groups, as well as over-ownership, where it's like not only would their financials not be okay to have taken ownership of that hotel in the first place, but their behavior in terms of three failed zoning changes, where you can't even agree what you're going to do with that building, which is creating even deeper issues. I mean, those are the kind of things that a registry would help us settle long before we got to this point, just as a note, I, to touch on what I said, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Aaron Cahill.
Good evening.
Good evening, y'all. No idea where it went, that's fun. Sorry, y'all, trying to find this, I didn't print it out tonight, so. Evening, council members, I stand here tonight with a heavy heart. Across our nation, voices are growing, the voices of power are growing louder, more threatening, threatening to bring force to our cities, threatening to sweep aside our most vulnerable neighbors, former President, President Trump's threats to descend on Chicago, paired with his dangerous words about criminalization of homelessness are not just political talking points, they are words that ripple like shockwaves through communities like ours. And here in Springfield, we have already felt that ripple. Just weeks ago, two Guatemalan neighbors were taken from us, abducted by ICE, by alleged ICE agents, right here in our own city, they weren't strangers, they were part of us, men and women who worked, who prayed, who had families who loved them. Now those families are broken, left wondering if they will ever see them, their loved ones again. The fear that swept through our immigrant neighbors after that night is chilling. Mothers are afraid to take their kid, children to the doctor, workers are afraid to show up for their shifts, people are afraid to call the police when they need help. Fear has silenced the very people who most need their city to stand beside them. At the same time, too many of our own residents remain unhoused, they're not statistics, they're people whose faces we know, veterans who served this country, children who deserve stability, seniors who deserve peace in their later years, yet instead of compassion, the national narrative is to paint them as criminals, as blight, as disposable. Imagine being told that the only thing your city, your state, your country sees in you is a problem to be cleared away, that is not, that is not who we are. Springfield must not be a city of fear, we must be a city of hope, a city that says we will not turn, we will not stand by while our neighbors are torn from their homes, we will not stand by while families sleep under bridges, we will not echo the cruel voices that tell us these lives do not matter. We can choose differently, we can choose housing over handcuffs, we can choose care over condemnation, we can choose to see the humanity in every neighbor, immigrant, homeless, struggling, and say you belong here, and we'll fight for you. This is our moral test, Springfield must rise to meet it. I don't know if y'all have been keeping up with the goings-on nationally, I'm sure some of y'all have, but Trump decided that DC needed to be taken over by the National Guard and the three-letter agencies in the executive branch. For the record, DC is at like a thirty-year crime low over the past several years, Chicago is at a crime low over the past thirty years, Louisiana has a higher crime rate than Illinois, Missouri has a higher crime rate than Illinois, and these are national statistics, like, you can look this up, it's, it's not a surprise really, but they're wanting to put troops on our streets. We can sit and argue legality of it, because it's not, all day long, but what we need is people out there telling them, no, go away, we don't need you here. What we need is our leadership saying, don't send your boys here, they're not welcome here, we need voices, that's what we need right now. And the fact that I've heard, from the time that those two gentlemen were kidnapped in this city till now, the city still has not said, where are our people? Where did you take our migrant friends? Nothing. They didn't condemn it, they didn't say, hey, what the hell, these are our neighbors, why are you doing this? Chicago followed up with them, though, Chicago got all kinds of info on them, Chicago stepped up. We should have stepped up, y'all, there's no reason our city couldn't have stepped up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Williams.
Alderman Williams. Oh, you, oh, okay, you got to take your thing off.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, council members, my name is Robert Williams, I'm here about, a friend of mine's Friday brother got killed by a train like a week ago before that, out of Chicago, and he was out here right in the back, out of state of mind mentally, he was drunk, intoxicated, and mental health was nowhere to be found, they always telling y'all they doing this and doing that, and they ain't doing nothing, you know, all they do is ride with the police, they catch, get people, become they payee once you get on SSI, but just recently, not, not long ago, I ain't going to say no name, but it was a scene downstairs where a brother fell flat on, on the ground, arguing with his mental health about his ID card, which he has the right to have, you know, she held on to his ID card for a week. These people ain't doing their job, I'm out here, I know what's going, people come to me, whatever I do, I know I don't do everything right, but I'm doing me, I'm, I'm educated, you check up Williams versus Reed, ten forty, case number, I done filed plenty of lawsuits, I done won cases, I done got stuff overturned in the Southern Circuit of Appeal, you know, you ain't looking at no dummy, but y'all ain't helping me, and I want to give a shout out to Catholic Charity, because they going to give me a pardon, they said they going to pay my first rent and my deposit, you know, but yeah, uh, like I said, my brother, I ain't going to say his name, I ain't going to put him out, but he was intoxicated, and y'all, and, uh, the people that know, be getting these grants, the mayor stated, when this first came to about, she said, where's mental health? Well, nobody here but this people on, on North Grand, they was here, she was the only one here, what's her name, Tamara? Tamika? Well, she was the only one here, but the next week, everybody and their momma showed up, excuse my French, but that's what happened, you see what I'm saying? But shit, I'm out here on the street, and I know I, I'm not perfect, I got my SSI.
Please watch your profanity.
All right, oh, excuse me, so, uh, back to what I was saying, uh, yeah, I'm here, I get SSI, and like I said, only people I'm giving thanks out to is God, Shannon, uh, Catholic Charity for putting up the deposit and the rent, paying my first month rent, and, uh, I want to thank Sean Gregory, right, because when I needed them, they was there, and they still been there, no matter what, you know, but like I said, we need to get together, you know, we need to do something better for the people that's out here. for the people that's out here homeless, that they not just alcoholic, they have mental problem. You don't see nobody sitting down there, one time I was here, this woman was out there in the front of the building with her pants down, then nobody go out there and help her. I sat right there, her friends in the back getting high off her money. I went back there and checked them, corrected them, said y'all should be up there with that girl. If that's your friend, you not gonna leave her, forsake her, anything, you gonna be right there, you gonna get her back in the right state of mind, but they didn't do that. I laid there and took it upon myself, picked that girl up, that woman, pulled her pants up, fastened them and put them back on, and got the ambulance called over here, and got her treated. See, this is the things y'all don't see, you know what I'm saying? My heart is in the right place, but y'all not, see what I'm saying? For every action, there's a reaction, I did twenty-five years for not raping nobody. A woman felt on, mouth felt on my genital, and that's real shit, I ain't got to take.
Excuse me, again.
They giving it to me, women, I, that's, it's Adam and Eve, not Adam and Steve, I love women. That's it, that all, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.